Good evening, welcome to tonight's council meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order. First thing I'm gonna ask, is there any agenda changes?
Staff have no changes to present this evening, Mr. Mayor?
Okay, next I'll open up for public forum if there is anybody here wishing to address the council. Seeing no movement from the gallery, I'll go ahead and close the public forum and ask for the approval of the consent agenda.
Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to approve the consent agenda as submitted.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign.
Abstain, as I was at neither of those meetings.
Okay, gotcha. Uh, we have no public hearing tonight. We have no unfinished business, so we're gonna move right into new business. And the first item is the lease purchase of a new dump truck. Probably Ethan and Pat will bring us up to par on that.
Yeah, um, as you guys know, we've been discussing this at work sessions as well, but we are down to only one operating dump truck in public works. And that has been out of commission with a fuel tank issue. That truck itself was bought, used back in 2021, I believe. It was a 2005, so formerly a KDOT truck, so it came to us well into its useful life. Did get a good deal and felt it was fairly good. We've continued to watch the used market and see if we can find anything that is of remotely a good investment for us. And have not been successful in finding that. We brought you the one opportunity of the slightly used dump trucks that were in Missouri. They weren't exactly perfect, but we were hoping maybe we could get a fairly decent price on those with them being used. And those went almost pretty close to what you're seeing for a new purchase. If you take out the fact that they didn't have the add-ons like this quote in front of you as far as snowplow spreader, that kind of thing. So, uh, this quote in front of you, it's under the source well, so that's a competitive buying cooperative contract essentially that cities have access to that ensures you're getting, you know, good pricing on that. As opposed to going through like a formal bid spec process, you know, issuing RFPs. I'll let Pat talk. If you guys have any questions as far as everything that it's outfitted with, it is there and available now. And then the second part of the packet just shows looking at a lease purchase, the difference of the city doing a five and a six year and what that would mean if we wanted to put any type of payment down on the principal or just finance the whole amount for those terms. You can see on the five-year, if we wanted to try and keep around a $50,000 a year payment, that would require about 100,000 down on a five-year plan. And on a six-year, that would be putting about 61,000 down, again, getting us right around that $50,000 a year payment. If we didn't do any sort of down payment, then a five-year is running us almost $73,000 a year on a lease purchase for five years and about 62,000 on a six-year, so.
Ethan or Pat, what do we usually put aside for this type of stuff? Have we been putting something aside every year?
Yeah.
I'm sure we have.
Yeah, um, I mean, it's substantially more than what we had, you know, long-term planned on. But yeah, it is, it is a piece of equipment on our long-term equipment plan, just again, at the price point we're seeing, very similar to what we saw with the fire truck of it's, it's going to takes, if we do, if we try and make it a completely cash purchase, my fear is, is it's going to undoubtedly delay future purchases in public works to rebound that.
They don't get any cheaper.
Two things, and Jim was on the right track, so we should have some money in that capital budget fund now that we were gonna spend on this truck. Obviously, the bigger down payment we put down, the better, but were you comfortable? You, you look at the books on a daily basis.
Catcher on that.
We've got other expenditures we want to consider annually, so if we put too much out of our pocket, you know, what's, what's gonna suffer? What are we gonna hold back on?
Yeah, um, no, the, the, the five or the six year with the down payment would be, in my estimation and opinion, financially, either one we could make work. The advantage of the five-year is obviously less, less cost, just with that one less year and more going down on it than the six-year. Six-year gives us a little more breathing room and it's just, it's very hard with equipment and especially with the bigger pieces of equipment in public works, you know, we do try and get as much life as we can out of them. You just never know when you're gonna have that failure that suddenly makes us rearrange.
If we have it 20 years, it's a, we'll be fine. We'll make it back out.
What is the estimated life of, of a, cause this would be new?
Yeah, this one would be brand new.
So what would the expected life expectancy of something?
The truck we have now is 20 years old, so.
Yeah, it's, that is.
We wouldn't have the miles of a KDOT truck.
Right, we've, we've been able to, on the smaller vehicles, the service body trucks and stuff, we've been hitting 15 years fairly easy. Getting up to 20 years, I, I think we can do that. But it's, it's, it's not so much like, like Jim said, we're not gonna put the miles on it. It's gonna be age that runs us out. So, um, and the work we do is not usually easy on trucks, but we're not gonna be, shouldn't be beating this one up too much, but again, it's, I'm, I comfortably think we could hit 20 years with it without too much problem. But I know we've hit 15 with a lot of vehicles easily. It's when we start getting to that, toward that 20-year mark is when we start really seeing problems develop. So, 15 easy, 20, I'd say shouldn't be a problem, especially for this truck that's not usually an everyday driver, but it's usually a weekly driver, so.
And then the diff, the truck that we, not too long ago, wasn't a dump truck.
It, it's, it's a small chassis truck, yes, dump truck. It does have a dump bed on it. And we do have a snowplow on it. Yeah, I'd say it's basically like a pickup with a dump bed on it.
And we don't have a big truck running right now, correct?
Correct.
And this gets used for what types of like, everything from like, I'm only just asking this cause if we don't know, you don't know, and I feel like the more we can explain to people like.
We haul material out to roads with it. We haul, uh, like next week, if we got it back up and running, we'll be using it for leaf and limb, hauling tree limbs during the storm last year. It was running tree limbs every day for, you know, three months. And we borrowed one almost identical to it from Valley Center. And we used theirs for quite a while, so it's that kind of stuff. Hauling sand and gravel out to the, you know, 10th Street, cause it's, yes, the 550 can do it, but this truck can do in one load what that takes three loads to do or four loads to do.
Right.
So.
And I think you explained like this can, when we decide to get like salt and sand for road treatments, this one.
This one, this one does have the snowplow already on it. That's part of the quote to add the salt spreader to it. And then we'll pick up material and have it sitting here during a storm, ready to go. And when we need it, we take it out and we put it down on our main routes and intersections, so. Yeah, it's already, it's already rigged for it. It just, um, they just, because salt spreaders are different, and some people are looking for something slightly different. We went with, I believe, a chain drive. Some places like to go with an auger drive, some like to go with a tailgate spreader type setup. So, uh, they didn't have that on it already, so.
Well, I think the important thing to point out is this truck is in stock, it's available. They probably gotta mount the spreader, but.
Right.
Other than that, it's ready to go. And right now, we don't have a big plow truck. So if we get caught in a snowstorm here in the next week or two, we could be in trouble. I think if we're gonna do this, probably now's the time.
And the one truck we had's already 20 years old?
Yeah.
I always say if, if KDOT has it listed for sale, it probably was more out when we bought it.
Yeah.
Yeah, they, they've, they've been selling stuff that's roughly about 15 years old. And the last auction that they did have, uh, some equipment up in, we looked at, they had seven trucks listed. I think it was five of them were listed as non-operational. And they were all roughly the same years the one we got already, so.
Well, with the cost of these things, you, you just about have to drive them till they drop with the cost of them.
Well, I'm, I'm not really concerned about us getting the, the extended years out of it. You guys are prudent about taking care of our equipment, so I don't have a concern about that. I can see us getting the 20 years out of it, just maintaining it as we wish we should.
And you don't have to have a special permit, like, do you have to have a special driver's license to? I don't, again, I don't know anything about like.
That'd be a Class B, right?
I'm not sure.
Okay, so sorry.
Yes, we, we, it does require CDL. And we do have a couple operators that have CDL.
I'm only saying that because I just feel like if we're gonna put the money into it, then the people that know what they're doing need to be doing, like, not that our people don't. I just wanna make sure that they're trained and, like, you don't want me going and jumping in this thing and being like, you know, like, no, nobody wants that, okay? And so I don't want that either, like, I, if, if it's an investment, like, I just, I want the right people, cause I don't want somebody getting in there and then, not that anybody would do that, I just wanna make sure that we have the right training or whatever.
Yeah, no, we, the, we do have, like I say, uh, it, it technically takes a CDL, which is a commercial driver's license, um, and we do have a couple operators that do have that, so.
Okay, thank you.
They're self-included?
No.
You don't?
No, I, I got the Class Two. And when I was driving commercial back in the day, CDL wasn't a thing. When I got out of trucking, CDL was just becoming, and I thought about getting it, but I never did. Cause I didn't plan to drive again until I got here and then.
I could drive it.
So I had my Class Two license.
Right, well, George just volunteered to help you if you needed.
You had a question, Roger? Well, we have two, right?
We've got two. One's on Purple Wave right now, or will be. This one, we're getting the fuel tank fixed. And we may have to put a little more money into it to keep it, cause we'd like to have two trucks, just. Yeah, it'll be more of a reserve truck, you know, until it really starts showing its, it's showing its age now, but I mean, till it's really just won't start and go for us, then we'll purple wave and be done with it. And then look at, hopefully, either picking up another one or maybe we'll get lucky and find a good used one at that point. But I'd just, not looking promising in that respect, so.
The one we're getting ready to sell on Purple Wave is older and in worse shape than the 2005 Sterling, so.
Which one, on the, on the lease purchase deal, what, what do you feel most comfortable with and what fits our budget the best? Either one or, I mean, obviously if we pay more down than we have less and then we get it paid off faster and less interest.
Yeah.
I realize that, I just, what, what's the comfort level here?
There's $39,000 there, so what's that, do you, how does it make you feel about your budget?
If it were me, I'd do the 100,000 down in five years, if it was me, yeah. If I had the 100,000 down, that's what we're trying to do.
No, I mean, we could, we definitely have the 100,000, thousand down. I mean, to George's point, it's, it's a somewhat hard question to answer. I mean, honestly, again, it just.
We don't know.
Perfect world, yeah, but you don't.
You don't know what's coming out.
You don't know when the next failure happens or throws us, so that difference, I guess, of the 39,000 in the principal payment, it definitely could potentially make a difference, but I, do I think it's something that, it, it's not also a large enough amount that I don't feel we can pivot to try and save the $10,000 in interest that those two plans have differentiated?
And we already know we have a second truck that's gonna need to be replaced down the road, we just don't know.
The sooner we can get it paid off.
Exactly.
Unless we got hanging out there, I feel a lot better about it.
But those funds do something else down at year six.
So you're looking just at consensus at this point, pursuing it?
I guess, um, authorization for us to move forward, we would bring back the formal lease purchase. For approval would probably be a prudent move because this is one of the few trucks they have ready to go. So the sooner we can put our name on it means the less likely, yeah, another, another municipality or contractor's gonna come in and swoop it, and then we're back to waiting for six months until another chassis and stuff come in. If you all are comfortable with that, but we can also.
Well, if we got the, this is the.
Yeah, I mean, this is our source well quote, and you can see with the source well pricing, it ends up being about a 10% savings from that top one, so.
I'm aware of that.
Well, if there's no more discussion, Mr. Mayor, I'd make a motion to force county staff to pursue acquisition of this truck.
We have a motion and a second to pursue this lease purchase agreement. All in favor, say aye.
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 Those same sign, that carries. Next item on the agenda is schedule of governing body orientation and a work session. Or I guess the two will be simultaneous.
Yep. So as we do always after elections, we have a work session in December. We've been doing this since our 2017 elections. To do a work session for governing body orientation with the current governing body and also invite the new elected officials who are elect but not yet in their positions, looking at the schedule. Suggesting, setting that orientation work session for the week of December 8th or December 15th, based on schedule availability. Did hear back that December 12th, which I believe is a Friday, is the only date with a hard conflict from the members elect. So, um, yeah, just getting that scheduled so we can communicate out to them the date and time that we would do that orientation, and that's usually about a 60 to 90 minute work session. And those of you that have been through it before, um, kinda know that we just give a broad overview kind of of some, some of the basic stuff, coma, cora, how the meetings go, overview of staff, the various departments in the city, the department heads are there, kinda giving a overview of what they do. Ideally, if we can try and get it so the city attorney can be there, that's always I find helpful cause he can answer some other questions that might come up in orientation from a legal standpoint. But that usually means Wednesday's the best night, I think, to not conflict with his other meetings, so.
Well, I'd be down for the 8th, for December 8th, I don't know where anybody else is, but.
That's the second Monday, December 8th is.
Yeah, December 8th is your actual meeting date.
Oh, I'm sorry.
So.
I would prefer before Christmas not to do a Wednesday, cause most of my Wednesdays have commitments already.
The 8th is super busy, that's the start of all of the basketball tournaments and things like that for, um, me. So if Wednesday's out, then the 15th would work best for me, Monday, the 15th.
I can do that.
I'm good with Monday, 15th.
I've got ball games, go ahead.
On the 15th?
HMS B-ball.
Oh, middle school, middle school, wow.
That's fine.
No, I just, I have bell practice. I just have bell practice on Wednesday nights from 6:00 to 8:00, because we're getting ready for our Christmas Eve concert.
15 work, I'm still teaching until the 18th, so.
What about a Thursday?
I can't do Tuesday's and Thursday's.
What about the 11th or the 18th? Or Jim, are you teaching classes on Thursdays?
I am, but if it's far enough along, I can always move it a little bit, so.
You got middle school on Thursday?
Yep.
It's a band choir, band and vocal music on the 11th on the Thursday.
Well, if we do Monday, the 15th, who can be here for that? Jim, George, that's, that probably works. If Charlie was gonna cuss anybody for anything, I think I'll know what it is and I can pick up in his place. Probably the most important thing is it works for those two guys. Let's, let's make a motion and make it happen.
Mayor, make a motion to set a work session orientation for December 15th.
At 6 o'clock?
No.
Later if you would like to have rather.
Another seating meeting starts at 6:00.
7:00?
7:30.
7:30, okay.
Unfortunately, I mean, if you guys started 7, I'd be here later, but whatever you wanna do there.
7:30.
Okay, I need a second on that, council.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to set the governing body orientation work session for December 15th at 7:30 PM. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Those same sign, that is set. Now, let's get on to the next issue on the agenda, and that's the, a possible change of regular governing body meeting day and time. Wonder who brought this up?
It was me.
Does, uh, besides from Shawna's concerns to move it, does it work better for the, for the city staff to do it on Wednesday? Or does it really matter?
I mean.
Selfishly, I would rather not have it on Monday, it's just because Mondays are already long days, but I will do what I need to do.
What, what, you were wanting to move it to Wednesdays, right, Shawna?
Yeah.
I think I quizzed the two elect folks, or I sent them just a message when we were doing the work night station. And Gary, I don't think had an issue with it. I think Roger had a concern on.
It's just a church night, um, it's not a night that I normally go, so I can certainly make it. I just wonder about, uh, how many of the churches, I mean, if that's a night that's gonna be a conflict for people who want to walk by.
I don't have a problem with Wednesday. It works best for me, cause it never interferes with the, a regular teaching night, but that's just, that's.
Monday, is that what, Monday you said, or Wednesday?
No, Wednesday is fine with me.
Oh, right.
Still keeping it the second and fourth Wednesdays of the month?
I think so.
And just, um, so that everybody, I guess, was, my concern with that is, um, on a personal level, um, I have middle school and high school kids who are involved in, at things literally every night of the week. And like, right now, I'm missing my kid's awards banquet. And so that's a sacra, I mean, that's something that you, but, um, it's not something that I wanna be in the habit of, I mean, my kids are only in high school for a short time, and so, um, that's a priority to me, while I know it's not all about me. I just, that's why it was brought up, because I don't want to miss council meetings, but I also am gonna put my family first, so.
Well, the other thing I think it does is it moves the council meeting to a different night than the school board meeting, cause there's been lots of times over the past where issues were going on in both places where people wanted to attend and they kinda had to pick which one they wanted to go to, so. That's kinda the way I see that.
Especially budgetary.
Budget time.
Yeah.
Makes a big difference.
So we're good for Wednesday, second and fourth?
All I need is a motion and a second, we can see.
We, uh, with direction there, we'll bring back, cause formally, if you're gonna change it, you would adopt that via ordinance. And it's a section of city code, but that was the big thing tonight. I know we had, yeah, just kinda loosely had some things thrown out and everyone kinda wanted time after the work session, so we were just seeking that direction. And Brad and I can draft that up to change, uh, change our section, and that would be the, the official dates. The one advantage, I guess, in terms of, um, the staff perspective, we obviously will make whatever night works for you all, but it does also move us off of three guaranteed holiday conflicts every year, so.
I have a question, Ethan, before. When will that go into effect with the January meeting where the new legs are sworn in? It would have to wait until after that, correct, if I read correctly? Okay.
Ideally, that would be the best, cause we still have to publish it as well, so rather we went ahead and did that, starting in the new year. Well, Mr. Mayor, if there's no more questions or discussion, I make a motion to move our regularly scheduled meetings.
Actually, I don't think we need it yet, George.
Oh.
He needs a consensus tonight.
Just need to bring forth an ordinance to do it. Yeah, and yeah, we'll probably wait to, to bring that forward, I guess, probably until that first meeting, cause yeah, swearing-in will happen on the Monday, no matter what, that's, that's enshrined.
We can do the ordinance earlier, it's just effective date would be settled.
Okay, sure.
All right, you got what you need on that, right, Ethan?
I do.
Next item under new business is a second meeting in December date change. We would be scheduled for Monday, the 22nd, why do we need to change it?
We don't, just knowing that people's travel plans and stuff vary, and sometimes that week of Christmas, we've assumed that everyone was gonna be here, and then we're scrambling on Monday to try and make sure we actually have quorum, so it was kinda putting out there, if people know that they're gonna be gone or anything, do we need to change it? If not, the 22nd works.
I'm here.
For us, just, we've made the mistake in the past of assuming and didn't want to make that mistake this year and.
I think there was one year we didn't have a council meeting because of that.
All depends on whether or not, it's when we get back from Florida, I'm flying out to drive my sister back, so.
I'm good for the 22nd.
You good? Yep, I'm good.
I have a quorum.
There's a quorum, so we're good.
I'm maybe.
Yeah, it just all depends if we get back in town, I'll be here.
I don't know, I don't think high school has practice that day, so there's a chance we might be on the road, but.
Winter buffer week, sorry.
I think it might be, it may be that week, I don't know. It might be that through the 29th. I'm not sure, that's why I have to check.
I bet it is.
That week.
So we're good enough, we shouldn't need to change that, right? All right. Well, we have no executive session this evening, so that moves us to the report section of the agenda, and the first item is governing body comments. Who am I gonna start with tonight? I'll start with you, Denise.
I've got nothing, except to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving.
I've got nothing, except to wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving, eat a lot, eat a lot of turkey and enjoy family in front.
Shawna?
Yeah, happy Thanksgiving, and I was contemplating this week a little bit about this, and in lieu of Thanksgiving week, I guess I would like to maybe present a challenge to people to find something positive that they can share about our community. I think that there's been a lot of negative things, and it's really easy to point a finger and, and go on to social media and be critical, but I'd love for everybody to share something positive about the community and about the great things, because there's lots of wonderful, great things that are, are happening, and I think it would be really great for us to turn a new leaf over and, and share some gratitude with our community, because it's a wonderful place, and there's a lot of great people out here trying to make a difference, and I think that would be a challenge that I am going to put out there to everyone, so, starting with me, I'm really grateful for the leadership that has supported me through the last few years of navigating through this, I know I ask a lot of questions, and sometimes they are silly questions, but I appreciate the leadership and the staff of always informing me with respect, and that means a lot, so thank you.
George?
Yes, I was looking through the bills and, tonight, and I saw that we had a small expenditure, but yet it was a hu, over a hundred dollars, I believe it was, to take inappropriately dumped refuge out at our burn site to take it to the landfill. My statement here is, tonight is for the citizens, that is not a dump, it's for branches, leaves, and grass. The Harvey County issues us a permit, it's a privilege to be able to have our own burn site, and if they find that there are items in it that shouldn't be there, they can pull our permit, and our community wouldn't have that burn site, which is a huge advantage, it's just huge, so, please, people, don't use it as a dump. That's all I have.
Totally agree with that, I've seen it on occasion. Charlie?
Thank you, not a lot. Happy Thanksgiving, I agree with George that we don't wanna lose a site such as that, other than that, hey, slow down, life's short.
Jim?
I don't know if I can beat that, I. Happy Thanksgiving from myself and my wife and family, but also wanna remind you, I'm a FFA guy from way back, and they're having their turkey trot on the twenty-ninth, okay, and if you, if you wanna donate to them, that'd be great, and if you wanna go out and run, which I'm not running anywhere, but I may walk somewhere, so. So, make sure to attend that event or support them, that's all I got.
Sounds good, well, for me, I'm looking forward to this Thanksgiving holiday, and Shawna told me to say something positive, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna say this, I, I bought a milk frother on Amazon, and I've got some adult cocoa recipes I'm gonna try. So I'm, I'm really looking forward to that this weekend, so.
Drive a window on your house.
We'll move to Ethan and his city manager report.
Not a lot, staff are currently transitioning very much into preparing for year end and the fiscal year turnover, so trying to really, you know, make sure that only, only expending what's absolutely necessary related to operations, that way we start out our next fiscal year in the strongest position as possible. Did have an opportunity to attend the KMEA and KMGA Annual Conference in Wichita a few weeks ago, it looks like natural gas pricing hopefully should remain fairly steady, although it has noted, as much as it's hard to believe, that we're, we're five years past year-y and, and that, and while things have been adjusted in that, there is some concern that perhaps people are forgetting what happened and what, what led to year-y, so thankfully, again, we, the city, and buyer membership in KMGA has changed, you know, the purchasing strategy for natural gas and whatnot, but the, the forecasts also indicate, or the general consensus seems to be that we will see maybe milder winters, but we will see more common of those short blast winter storms where temperatures drop to sub-zero, and that's really what was causing the issue, and a lot of that depends where the wells themselves actually even freeze in the country, so. But overall, at least looking at this winter, seemed to be good, so hopefully no, no undue surprises there and with the larger concerns, and just very educational overall, as far as us, you know, we have a local distribution of natural gas, but also that people don't realize the intricate interplay between the natural gas market and, and the electricus, electricity and, and what we do there, so. Very fascinating conference, always a good time to go. Other than that, we continue to work on buttoning up some projects, hopefully on North Street, we have a utility easement, we're gonna hopefully look at establishing for the betterment there to move some of those utilities that are currently right under North Street, to make sure that those are no longer under the street. So we'll have some changes there, and we're working with the engineer to get those new legals updated, working with Brad as well on what we need to do to modify that, and then we are still moving forward with the two seventeen main building, and hopefully we'll have that property transferred over by our next meeting, when that's back on your guys' agenda, and that is about all I have to report unless there's, oh, sorry, almost, I do know that many residents received mailings again related to lead pipes, lead service lines. Again, I just wanna reiterate, we've taken a few calls and inquiries that that is the, the violation that was referenced in that letter that went out has to do with the timing of those notices being sent from that initial survey, the city only did get about a ten to maybe fifteen percent at best response to those initial surveys. I realize some people may be at a loss of how to fill it out, or what's in their home, why we're asking for the information, again, those are federal rule changes that have also become KDHE mandated, we have a responsibility to get that information, we have to establish what is there, our crews have done as much as they could, as far as looking in the meter pits and trying to ascertain, but, you know, we have to notify people, and if we continue to mark things unknown, at some point for us to get that information, it probably will be us going door to door, or having to do spot, you know, trenching in, in yards with the hydro vac to figure out what that service line is made out of, so just ask people if you have questions, call City Hall, call and speak to Pat, we'll gladly try and help people as much as we can to answer that survey, but it is something that's mandated, it all stems from the Flint, Michigan crisis, and, and the federal government really wanting, you know, to disclose to people, again, it's not the water that we're buying or servicing that has a lead issue, but depending on what the materials in your home are made of, there are potentials for contamination based off that, so, please fill out those surveys, because you'll just get another survey back from us, and we do have deadlines to meet with KDHE, and we have a responsibility to continue to try and build that database and complete it as much as possible, so we'll hopefully have an FAQ up that'll answer a few more questions by the end of, of this week, but yeah, just want, I guess, to rest any assurance of this isn't, that Halsted is having a lead crisis. You can find ten years of our consumer confidence reports related to water testing, we test the water regularly per KDHE and have always had good results, I don't know, Pat, if anything, okay, that I was missing there, but yeah, just assured, because I, I do know, and do you realize when people kinda see it, why they might initially be like, oh, lead in water, oh, what's, what's happening, and when we have an issue with water, that would be pushed out via a, a much more urgent communication method than, than mail, so.
Was there an anticipated return date on the, I, I don't recall seeing one.
Um, not on the second one.
Just ASAP.
Yep.
So how often did these surveys go out, because we've, I've already filled one out for our property, and now we're being asked to do it again, so how often?
There might have been, yeah, I mean, some people might have got one that had already filled one out. We work on completing that database, and then hopefully we'll go, it's just with nine hundred plus meters. There were some that might have got it because we didn't have all the pieces of information, we might have had.
We may not know.
The.
I mean, seriously, we don't know.
Yeah, and basically, every time we get an unknown response, we have to send out it again, even though it was already marked unknown. Until such time as we can say it's not unknown anymore.
So how far do, when you build a house, you have to pull permits, and pull permits and pull permits, are those ever kept on file? Not that detailed?
Not the detail of what like the service line was, because, again, by and large, that's always been treated, if it's on the other side of the meter, that's a homeowner, and that's the very interesting thing about that, is the city is being asked to ascertain what historically we have always basically said, you know, this is the homeowner, and the builders issue, the city, responsibility stops at the meter, but because the lead contamination can come even beyond what is the city's responsibility, we're still having to establish what that is to disclose to homeowners that that potential's there, depending on what they have.
Two things, is it possible to put on our television on Channel Seven, a request, hey, get these, get these surveys filled out, we really need the information? Is it possible to do something on there?
We, we can, I, I don't think that we have a very good audience on Channel Seven anymore, though. We've really kind of slowed down what we put on there, we just tend to do more Facebook, website, the push notifications.
Maybe we see it on there, and maybe Mr. Bush somehow can highlight this in the newspaper to, just to bring some attention to this portion of, of our meeting.
One thing I'd like to point out is I have several people messaged me and say, well, why does, why do we have to know, and I, and Ethan spelled it out pretty well. The city's not asking, it's the KDHE that's asking, not the city, so I wanna stress that to folks, that we're not the ones asking the question, we're just relaying their request.
It's an EPA thing.
Yeah. Comes from federal to state to us.
And it's every public water supply, so.
Everybody.
Brew water, and the whole works, so.
It's not a uniquely Halsted issue, no.
Oh, that was a marquee and the newspaper.
Any other questions of Ethan's report? The only other question I have this evening, and maybe Ethan or Julie knows, when is the Community Foundation lighting their lights off for their Christmas display?
I think it's the sixth is their big event.
With the jingle.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep, December sixth.
Just checking so we can keep that news out there in the public. Any of the rest of you have any questions for Ethan, or anything else you'd like to add this evening? Well, then we are done with our agenda, and I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion in a second for adjournment, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
So same sign, we are adjourned, thank you, counsel.